I just scheduled another one for Thursday.
Yeah, I saw that comment.
It's nothing to do with you. We won't have to. We don't, that one won't go on YouTube or anything. I may not even record it.
Okay.
I may record it just to the uh.
To the cloud?
To the cloud, yeah.
Okay.
I can save it for you then.
Okay.
Or type it for you.
Alright. Okay, we're recording. We are live on YouTube.
I got the awesome idea of taking down my. They just drove me nuts.
I did mine that one Saturday. It wasn't too bad. Right after, right after uh New Years.
Mm-hmm.
So. Actually, I had Aaron and Liam, my two grandsons. They helped me, so it went pretty fast.
Assume one of these days I'm gonna have my. I stop summer my nephew. For a buck a piece, they'll carry all my Christmas toads out to the shed. There's like six or seven of them on the porch, so that's definitely worth it. So.
Hi, Paul.
Paul, how are you?
I'm still Michelle Richard.
Must be muted.
You're out. How to change it?
Tim?
Yeah.
Not hearing anybody. Can you guys hear me?
Can you hear me, Bill?
Yeah, I can hear you. Tim, you can hear me? Yes.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Linda.
How everybody, Paul?
Uh.
Great game this weekend.
I'm not hearing anybody has uh. Can anybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm not hearing you guys, so. Let's see what we're doing here.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you, Linda.
Yeah, I don't think Bill can.
I'll start video. Okay. Can you get effects? I can't, I'm not hearing anybody. Any thoughts? Let me go.
Yeah, I think we got it.
Okay. Tim, say something, will ya? We'll see if we got you.
He's muted, that's why.
Oh, you're muted, Tim.
Bill, can you hear us?
Now I can, yes.
Good.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Okay, Linda, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, you're good. David?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Paul, you can hear, right? Alright, we're getting. Okay. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good. David, I don't hear the puppy.
Oh, thank God, he's in there, he's in there playing with his toys. Your hair squeaks in a little while.
So we're, everybody's slowly coming on here.
Okay.
There's Norm.
Norman, what's the other one's name?
Snoopy.
Snoopy?
Yep, we got Norm here.
Aww. Cute.
Got Snoopy right, he's coming. Then we got the old guy here.
Aww. They're so cute.
I told them they have to behave. We'll see how that goes.
I know. Gizmo will walk in and he'll look at me, see what I'm doing, and then he just walks back out. He wants nothing to do with it.
Yeah. I wish I could say the same. They wanna be in the middle.
Oh, yeah. That's okay.
Hi, Jack. Can you hear us? Okay.
Hi, Jack.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi, Jack.
Hi, Linda.
Welcome back, Jack.
Well, thank you.
Been a while.
Okay. Slowly getting everybody on here. Bob, you, can you hear everybody?
Yeah, you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Vern.
Hi.
Yeah, try to change my name on here so they will say Vernon, not Vern.
We know who we are. Looking good in blue. Those are Bill's color.
No.
Okay, never mind.
The Washington Football Team.
I know, at my family, it's Steelers, Bills, and Green Bay Packers.
I'll be rooting for uh Kansas City.
Very, very hard.
You haven't made.
Don't be, don't be bitter now.
Oh, no, no.
Well, I'm a bitter Steelers fan, so.
So is man, so is my daughter, Mandy. You don't wanna talk to her right now.
Yeah, I know.
Hey, there's always next year.
I can't believe I'm having to say that.
Hey, we've been waiting since, what, 95?
That's true. Hey, Bill, do you remember when Jim Kelly came to Bonaventure to do one of the uh sports camps or something years ago?
Yes.
I remember that.
Yes. Yeah, he held his camp here.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, uh my son and uh Brian Donley's son, Matt, Matt Donley. They have pictures with uh Jim Kelly and Dan Marino.
Wow.
You know, when Dan Marino was here to help out during that, so.
Yep, I remember going down and um picking up somebody and he was walking off the field. It was pretty cool that he was here.
What was the name of the hotel down there? That, where the.
It was the Holiday Inn was down there at the time. And then there was also, they had the Castle Inn. This was right across, you know, across the street there from uh, actually, it's where the Community Bank built their, their uh. Mortgage department down there. So you had the Castle Inn and a lot of them stayed at the Holiday Inn.
Yep.
Yep.
That was right where uh.
The Kmart is.
Yeah, that area, uh, yep.
I, I do remember that. That was around when I first came here.
Yep.
Then there was the De Soto was there also.
Oh, yeah.
Remember, that's where uh, that's where the uh, the new tool place is there.
Yep. I remember the par three at the castle. That was a lot of fun.
Yes, it was.
We're aging ourselves, Bill.
Oh, wait. I can remember watching Bob Lanier play as a freshman. When they had, you had the freshman team and they had to play a year, you know, and as a freshman before they could move on to the uh. To the varsity, I guess you'd call it the varsity back then, so.
Wow. I can remember taking care of Bob Lanier when I was a student nurse. Hi, Kevin.
Hey.
Hi, Kevin.
I'm running a bit late. I had a certain alderman ran out of gas.
Well, that's funny, cuz I was on time.
Oh, yeah? You're still in your vehicle. Alderman who ran out of gas. And I realized my new tumbler came in and it wasn't washed, so leftist tears. Got my Daily Wire tumbler. Wash that and get some water in it.
Was that your dog you took to the vet today, Kevin?
Our new one, yeah. We got. Supposed to pick him up on like Friday or Saturday and the neighbor of the lady who had him called us and. She was like, listen, she doesn't have any money to take this dog to the vet. Like, you need to step in and like, can you help out? So I went all the way out to Ubudam Road and picked the dog up and drove him to Dr. Kelly.
Kevin, what does that mug say?
Uh leftist tears.
Oh. That's cool. I don't think anybody on the lefts can be crying tomorrow.
Nope. Hi, John.
Hello, everyone.
How we doing?
Wonderful. How's everyone doing?
Super.
Lance, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I'm just here to, guys, that's all.
Okay. Very good. Um, anybody? Let's see, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. So, are we good to go?
Good to go.
Okay. So, I'd like to call to order the Strategic Planning Committee for Tuesday, January 19th, uh 2021. So, let the record show that all committee members are present. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous committee meeting. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gonzalez, all in favor? I.
Hi.
The opposed, motion carries. Uh, we have no unfinished business, but we have a new referral for consideration, so uh. Without further ado, in the moment we've all been waiting for, um, we have a presentation tonight on the Cataragus County.
Yeah, stuff. I'm not, I'm just.
I'm sorry? All right, just FYI, if you are on standby or watching, you can go ahead and mute yourself. Um, so, uh, Cataragus County Oleane Airport by Director Ring. So, uh, Mr. Ring? How would you like to uh do this? Uh, are you, do you have the ability to share your screen or do I need to make you the host or does Bill, uh, does the mayor need to, somebody have to make you the host or? Look at that.
What was that like?
Wow.
Got it.
Okay.
We can see it.
Alright, um, you know, at, at all of your requests, I put together as much pertinent information as I could. Collect on the airport, um. As well as, you know, the things that, that you'd requested and I, I tried to be comprehensive. Feel free to ask any questions and if I can't answer them, I can. Get back to you on another time. Starting with a quick inventory, you know, if you've never been up there, um, you know, this is the layout of the airport looking north, obviously an aerial view. Um, now, there's one main runway, one main blacktop runway that's 4,800 feet long. There's also a grass runway, and you can't see that from the main hangar. Um, on days where. Land might be really high and you've got a small plane, they can land there. Um, in some cases, you know, they do, they have to land in Oleane, like, if they're hanging around all this there. Um, they'll use that runway as backup. We have to maintain it, you know, mowing it at a certain height per FAA regulations. Um, our, our big building, the main hangar and offices, there's also a snow removal equipment building attached to it. Um, you know, is, is there in the center and then the two long white buildings are our T-hangers. One that was built, um. I would guess around 2010, fairly new, and then an old T-hanger. That was built many years ago in the seventies or eighties. Um, it's pretty rundown, but they each hold uh 10 different hangar rentals. Um, there's also a landfill, so the city used to haul their waste to this landfill. It's closed. But landfill regulation, you know, we're required to monitor. Seepage, uh, monitor the methane gas that's given off through the vents and things like that. So that's. Kind of north, northwest, or sorry, north, northeast of, of the runway there, and extends for maybe a thousand feet along that hill.
Hey. Bob, don't we have some costs that go along with that landfill, something to do with fines we pay cuz it exists or something?
We pay about 25,000 a year to just monitor it, so we have a company that goes out and samples it quarterly. They sample the. Test the water. And then every once in a while, DUC comes down and does an inspection, um, you know, on seepage, on leachate. They did all Western New York, the first year I was here. And to see the ranking, they were, they were meant to, to rank all the landfills in Western New York and then tackle the worst ones first. It could be other quality. And I, again, I haven't heard anything back from that inspection. Here.
Do we, is there like, uh, is there an end in sight for that thing or is this like going for forever?
I was gonna say, Jason, there, those counties just fell off after like 30, 35 years, and we closed ours shortly after the county did, so I believe ours is probably on par for that. I was gonna ask Bob that same question.
I don't know that. I can look that up. I guess I'd be surprised if it was that short of a timeframe. But they may have sophisticated landfill. A lot of them now are way more sophisticated than they used to be. They're built in layers of clay. And they also have class systems. Ours doesn't have a system. So I'll, I'll look into that, just out of curiosity, but, you know, we're gonna approach about extending our contract with the consultant that comes in and does the sampling and. And monitoring. That cost has been pretty much the same year after year since I've been here. Some of our goals, obviously, maintenance is really our biggest thing. Um, trying to provide the best service that we can to the public up there. Um, you know, again, if you've been up there, it's a nice facility. Um, 20 years ago, it was really, really rundown. You know, the ceiling tiles were falling through. It was, you know, it, it was just. It hadn't been maintained very well. Uh, at the time, I don't think we were applying for FAA grants. Um, the runway was being maintained by our street screw. And again, it just kinda got in disrepair of the old hangars where the only ten bay hangar we had up there was starting to, you know, age and get into disrepair. And then, uh, you know, about 10 or 15 years ago. We started taking on capital projects and building it up and maintaining it. It's in a really good place right now. So we're again, just trying to keep it at the service level. That it's at, more than anything, we provide wifi up there. Obviously, that's needed for our staff, but we provide it for pilots that may have to lay over. They may bring a client here that has to do business in Oleane or wherever. And the pilot may, you know, they may take the crew car, which we provide. To anybody who might be flying into the airport, and the pilot just kinda hangs out. So there's a lounge there, there's magazines, there's, there's TV with Netflix. And, uh, you know, that's the office area. I listed important things, you know, that the airport provides. You know, including support to our businesses. You know, it's the only paved runway in Cataragus County. There's an interesting tidbit about Mercy Flight, so if they, if there's fog in the valley, Mercy Flight can't take off. So what they do is they taxi, they taxi a helicopter up to the airport and take off from there. Um, so without our airport so close to Mercy Flight, there's days where they wouldn't be able to take off due to fog. And I don't think it's that often, but you know, our airport is their go-to as, you know, by far the closest airport from Mercy Flight to utilize. There are a lot of people that just like to fly over airport for recreation purposes, you know, local people, um, from Oleane that keep a plane up there and just go flying for the day. Um, or use it for business, you know, in the case of Napoleon Engineering and others. You know, the council requested a flight log. This is what our data shows for the last five years, pretty steady use. That's. Um, a single, you know, a, account or a tally for uh arrival and a tally for departure, so those are in and out. Um, it is only tracked from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM when we have staff on.
Hey, Bob, just to, just to clarify, so you're saying. When someone lands, or I'm sorry, when someone takes off and then someone lands, that, that's counted as two flights?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, at night, there's times where, you know, when people are flying overhead, their systems can show where fuel is and the price of fuel as well. And, you know, we try to keep our, our fuel prices as low as possible, so in some cases. Um, times that aren't 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, there are people just landing, you know, and getting fuel, cuz we have a 24/7 credit card machine. In order to get fuel, and then they take back off. So those aren't tracked, but I think those are probably fairly minimal.
Can I ask you a question, Bob, uh, in regards to this? So, I mean, it, it's, it's no surprise, uh, that the, the summer months, you know, seem to be, and especially July and August are, are pretty peak. Uh, in terms of usage. Um, but I'm, I'm, I guess this is where. Your experience with what the FAA requires. You know, the, the winter months, which I can figure is probably one of the more uh capital intensive, as far as you've gotta plow the runway, you gotta. Salt the runway or whatever, uh, you know, de-ice planes and so on and so forth. Uh, you know, December, January, February, I mean, February effectively, and now last year. You know, have what, four, four planes, uh, you know, either land and take off or whatever. Um, are we required to, to operate these, uh, this facility year round, 12 months a year?
Um. I don't think, I mean, we have to maintain it, meaning I think we would have to plow, you know. Have, have staff there full time. We've been looking into that, you know, for quite some time. Whether we, you know, we don't always have staff there on the weekends, and obviously, we don't have staff there after 4 o'clock, but. If a plane wanted to land, they're in place to where they can call our airport and we can go out and clear. We want to be accommodating, you know, to people, you know.
Well, there's, I, I agree with accommodation, but there's a certain degree of accommodation, right? I mean. When you're talking about four planes in February, you know, that's, that's really accommodating, I guess, you know, I. It's, it's about usage, right? So then the alternative is, well, then how do you get back to having, you know, 50 planes? Uh, or, or, you know, increase the usage. Um, but, but anyways, I guess, I guess my, my question was, you know. Could the, could the airport effectively have a shutdown December, January, February? Um, you know, under the, the guidelines that we were operating under?
I can certainly look into it. Um, you know, we would still obviously have to heat the building, provide some access, but. You know, with our fueling station, people really couldn't land unless the runway were cleared, so I think that would have to continue.
Um. And I mean, and, and to your, to your, to your point, if, if you're spending the money to, to, if you have to heat the facility anyways and, and you've got a, you know, maybe it's a marginal. Potential savings there. It just doesn't seem to be heavily utilized during those months, so, you know, trying to think, is there. Reduced, reduced hours, you know, I, I don't know, something that.
Yeah, and I, I don't think all those solutions are gonna come in one session, you know, so.
Yeah.
Once, once we get to the budget numbers and kind of pencil this out, or at least, you know. And you'll see how the progress that we've made up to this point and, you know, put together a pool of ideas that could possibly be any measures.
Yeah.
Or, or measures.
Thanks.
Bob, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sorry, Linda, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Um, and maybe this is more for the mayor. Have we asked to be reassessed or our taxes decrease from issuing? Or is that something that's just fixed? Cuz I think it's what, 13,000 or 16,000 a year? Cause I think it's what thirteen thousand or sixteen thousand a year we pay?
Uh, we have been, uh. We have, uh, uh, been waiting and, uh. I'm not sure if Nick relayed the information to Jack or not, but the, the assessment is, uh. Uh, we have asked for a, what, what is it when you ask for your assessment to be reviewed, Jack?
Grievance.
Yeah, we filed a grievance on our taxes. Thank you, Kevin. And, uh, we've been waiting to, uh. Get that reviewed, so.
Okay, thanks. I just was curious. Thanks, Bill.
Um, Bob, real quick, we, we rent the airport all year round and we don't decrease re- uh, rent even during the slow months. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. It's, it's the same year round.
Okay, just, just to kind of throw that out there for the discussion as well, because I'd hate to be renting it out to a group of people and they're expecting, you know, some sort of level of service. And we're not, now we're not, uh, you know, plowing the runways rec- uh, frequently or ma- you know, maintaining, you know, the fuel supply and things like that. Just. Just something else to throw out there.
Yeah, and I mean, in the, in the defense of those numbers too, just from experience up there, I think. They're a little low, plus in the winter you got. Uh, Bob's employees are, are out there plowing, you know, and some things will. Land take happen that don't get recorded too. Just to kind of ease your mind on how low those numbers are, John.
Uh, moving on, the kind of the budget discussion, so between all our efforts. It started with, with the year that I got here, we've reduced the budget pretty significantly. Now, I've done some things. I know that we've reduced the fuels, the, the fuel number in the budget. You know, and you also see the expenditures of, of matching the board budget. Um, and the way that we've, we've completed projects, but every year we've lowered it since I've been here between. You know, staff not being there on weekend as much. Doing fewer projects, um, through budgeted funds. So I compared a, I wanted to take a twelve month fiscal budget and do a, you know, revenue and expenditures report. I did this again in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, for those of you that were here. We passed on to the council. I don't think it was much of a discussion, but. That loss at the time, and then the fifteen thousand dollar grant funding match was a hundred and sixteen thousand. This past year, our losses. Again, through everybody's efforts, we are, are making noticeable difference to. The bottom line up there.
So Bob, what, what was it that contributed to this, um, hundred K drop almost here?
A couple of things that we've run it, we've raised rental fees the last couple of years. Um, twenty-five dollars a month, I want to say one year and fifteen or twenty dollars the next year. That helped. Fuel sales and, and just monitoring that closely, you know, every couple of weeks, we look at fuel sales up there. We try to be the place to go for fuel because we actually make really significant profit. Um, we had some luck and we had, um, Elsie Whitford, a company out of Cuba. They had two large planes up there. One just crashed, you know, I think it was just a minor thing, but they've since left our airport unfortunately, but. They use jet fuel and they're using hundreds of gallons. That helped us a lot, especially here. You know, other small things, we did LED conversions to our lights, our electricians, the vision were up there converting lights. Um, at the time I got here, there was like two hundred and fifty channel. On the cable TV that they had up there, we just got rid of it and we got Netflix. Being like eighty-five dollars in a month, um, cable. And we just got rid of it and use our wifi and got enough fix after. I don't know if there, so. A little bit.
The fifty percent increase in the fuel for the vehicles.
Where you see that.
Use the twenty nineteen to twenty budget was three grand. Budgeted, sorry, but the, uh, it was, uh, the expenditures were seven grand.
I think that was either likely an encumbrance or when they fuel, you know, it's a bulk sale, so it could have been over two budgets. They just happened to order twice that year instead, like, or multiple times that year. Want to, I don't have those exact numbers right in front of me, but that was more than likely what happened.
Hey, hey, Bob, was the, um. It was the drop, uh, in the expected fuel for, for resale, was it due to just lower demand? Or was it, uh, due to lower, uh, fuel price? Any ideas?
Revenue from fuel sales or the fuel for cable.
No, the, we expected seventy thousand and it dropped to forty-one thousand. For aviation fuel for resale.
Oh, right, right.
Was it, was it due to the, that we just, there was less demand, so we didn't have to order it, or, or was it, uh, due to dropping fuel prices?
I, I don't know. I'd, I'd have to look into it. A little further. But obviously, oil is about as good yet right now, so that could have been, we budgeted on. On previous year numbers and put a safe number in there and then. Because you've seen the output from, from planes landing, it's about the same year after year, so I would guess that's.
Right.
Likely culprit there.
Right.
Bob, which of these, the top line that includes the employees, or is that not shown here?
That's one hundred land.
That's personal service, yeah.
Okay.
Some of our additional revenue sources besides fuel cells and rental fees over the years, so. Cataragus County gives us typically seventeen thousand five hundred every year. Here, we use that for a light project. The next few years, we had a problem with a. Fuel pump that needed to be replaced. Done it, we worked on it, we went, we worked with the company, engineering. Put it out the bid, we used years, excuse me, county funding. In order to complete that project, which was a hundred percent funded. In two thousand twenty, we use it as a FAA grant match, grant match, and then. This previous year, as you know, they gave us eighty-five thousand. You know, for the runway project. You know, airport is on four hundred acres, a lot of it's wooded. We had a manager there that. Timber industry and we had, uh, you know, some significant revenue. I recently spoke to him about. There and it won't be as, it was the first one. Movement, so they would go in and take. Medium sized trees out from, and chip everything, but they would still pay us. They'll get some revenue from it. But that's something that's kind of been in the works recently. And then we rely a lot on DOT and FAA grants. Ninety-five percent funded with five percent local match. Events up there, if any of you attended them, Halloween event, the pancake. Better put on by airport support group. And typically they donate either half or all of their proceeds to us to, for a project, you know, they bought a windsock one year, replace. The bulb on, um, our beacon year, small projects like that, but it helps. You know, they identify the project and they raise money for it. Purchase it.
Bob, is that collectively, that thirteen grand?
Right, so, yeah, thirteen thousand over five years.
How much, hey, Bob, quick question, how, how much timber, is there timber remaining up there?
It really needs time to grow in again. A lot of like the maples and the cherries and the long trees that could actually be turned into lumber. There too, and, um, Emerald Ash Bore is in our area, so they want to go in and take a lot of the ash and. Into something before it all just dies and falls over and makes it difficult for other trees to grow up, so that's the idea that.
There's quite a rush for that going on right now.
Yeah, um, with the, with the market demanding more lumber and stuff like that, they're pushing a lot of these, but most typical turnovers, you'll take a. Plot of land and you'll completely harvest it within thirty years, but split it in two different categories of fifteen year cycles. Uh, I've been dealing with the county on this and a lot of their properties and working with them and learning quite a bit from their lumber experts, so.
Yeah, it's a positive. It's gonna be some time before we get another, you know, six figure. Um, revenue source, I think. So we've also reduced costs by. Planning on our projects around the grant funding that we get, you know, I identified several years ago that our HVAC needs to be replaced. Um, a grant came available, uh, through Joe Gilio's office and we applied for it and we got it. It's a hundred percent funded. We're expecting all that work to be done. In the spring or in the summer, and, you know, we won't have to worry about those HVAC units for another twenty years. I mentioned that. That had been a problem for a couple of years when I came on and we waited for grant funding to take it on. The runway rehabilitation project, you know. You all asked us to come up with a plan for that project. I think we've done a good job getting that. Two point eight million dollar project down as low as we can. Um, the most recent stimulus they passed had an additional twenty thousand CARES funding. So it's possible that match will be twenty thou- will be five thousand. Um, instead of twenty-five thousand, where we could use it for a future project. Since we have a couple of big projects coming up.
What is that CARES, what is the CARES funding? How does it read? Is it just for a municipal projects or is it specifically for municipal airports?
I don't know. My answer, our consultant, um, told us how much we got, I assume, you know, when, when the stimulus was written. Money was allotted to. Local airports and there's just an algorithm that depending on the size of the airport.
Yeah, that, the full stimulus package, it was, uh, there, there was money in there for airports. And, uh, that was the, uh, the thirty thousand we got. And, uh, Bob is just telling about there's, uh, uh, potentially now another twenty thousand in the current stimulus package. Uh, were laid out for, to best of my knowledge and from, uh, uh, what I, what I, uh, saw on this was, uh, for airports.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Getting into FAA projects, uh, we work with a consultant, uh, from CNS engineers. And Mayor and I have occasional calls with their project manager. Great, they walk us through the whole process. You guys have been through passing resolutions for the grant applications. I think you've seen this spreadsheet before on our five year plan. Being on the next couple of years, those big projects, um, on the runway and the taxiway. You know, I'm trying to fund those to get over that hurdle. That big hurdle, that big monetary commitment. And, and a, a big reason is it's starting to deteriorate and I've got a couple of pictures. You know, it's just not something that. Maintain as a city, there's cracks, you know, that are, that are really growing in size. Uh, it's not acceptable to have a pothole on a runway. Hazard. A lot of planes don't have suspension, um, they're not like our roads. I've got a note in there. Um, that you all have asked about in the past. With the grant, the grant assurances, essentially, when you take funding from FAA. You are tied to it for twenty years. So if you take their money and then you close down the airport, you owe a hundred percent back the first year, right? And then it reduces by five percent annually for twenty years. Whatever, and so there is a tie to FAA funding. Life of a, a grant is. Produced over twenty years. So through the FAA grant funding, we've been able to. Replace equipment. The tea hanger, um, the new tea hanger that we had was a. Project lighting systems, um, remodeling of the. Offices and things were all, were all grant funded. Typically FAA point in a direction of what they want us to do and right now. Runway and ramp resurfacing projects are high up on their list. Besides the fact that our runway is starting to deteriorate. Really prioritizing right now. And here's a couple of pictures of the runway, you know, I think I explained these the last time, you know, we talked. You know, at the cold joints, it's really separating, you know, we've tried to crack seal these, but it's. Maintain it. Anymore between, I just. I can't see out of the year to send my crew up the blacktop hatch at the airport. Um, and then send another crew up to crack seal every year. With opportunity to fund the runway project. I think it just makes sense financially even to. Fix these issues that have become, you know, a persistent complaint from our pilots. And the, some of the issues that these are, so. These will lead to eventual potholes where you start to see the base failure in there.
Is anybody else thinking about a flex seal challenge here? Or is that just me?
About what?
A flex seal challenge, you know, that guy on TV that sold it.
That's true.
Sorry, Bob, I just, I couldn't help it.
This is my last slide. Our needs going forward, these are just my suggestions. Um, I mean, it'd be great to have an airport manager, a full-time staff up there. You know, the times that I've thought about it or, or the mayor and I have talked about it, really hard to justify. Spending more money up there, right? There's, we've exhausted a lot of the revenues. Um, you know, we've looked into creative things like a fixed base operator who would. Take over management of the airport. That just didn't really bear any fruit. You know, but the current manager is seventy-six years old and it's, the whole thing is run by part timers, so. You know, whatever creative ideas that we come up with, we can make the best effort we can as a city or, you know, with a part-time staff, but. It'd be interesting, I guess, not just interesting, but it really, to do this justice, it really could use. A full timer or somebody who really dedicates their time up there to. And trying to grow something, um, helping promote residences and making calls to. Why aren't you using airport? What can we do to, to help you out? You know, what are the services that we can make better? For you to use the airport more. And we need, we need more support from the county, not more support, but continued supportive of, of that, that higher, um, financial commitment. And, and share the load with, with our losses, maybe reduce that down even more over time. Then, you know, again, we, it's great to have your support and you've all, all supported it up to this point. And I hope we can get through these next couple of big projects. We're gonna be submitting. A pre-app, the runway project on January twenty ninth, you know, with, with all your permission. We're trying to raise money for us and I'm hoping you support. And, you know, we'll do our best to continue exploring new revenues wherever we can to help with. Grant matches, new projects, I want to say.
Okay, questions, comments? Suggestions?
Yes. Have you thought about creating more hangers to expand on making money there?
Yeah. So what I got here, the idea was to take down the old T hangar. So we had full capacity of our hangers up to like the pandemic. And now we have only eight out of ten of the old T hangers. We have a waiting list for the new T hangers. But we talked about it and we would have to demo the existing T hangers, the old ones, which means all those planes would have to move out of our airport. And over the course of probably two years, we'd have to build a new one. Which potentially we could expand like away from the main hangar. It was, we thought it, at least at the time, it was too risky to take down the old one. And we thought maybe we could refurbish them, I don't know if anybody's been in those old T hangers, but they're in pretty rough shape.
Yeah.
So I mean, the only thought I have there, Bob. I know some of, I mean, just, and it's, and I don't have a close relationship up there these days, but even though some of those were used somewhere like inactive. You know, they had an old plane they were restoring or thought about doing, but they were paying sort of there and not much happening, so. I feel if we did some deeper checking with who the customers are, we may be closer to the ability to empty those out for an amount of time, do that work than we think.
Yeah.
And if it comes down to the couple of planes we have space to move them in there for a project like that.
The FAA won't currently fund construction projects. Maybe, yes, but.
Bob, do we still have planes in the main hangar?
Yes.
Okay, how many do we currently have in there?
Five or six. We, we have a helicopter, I think, in there. Frontal cost of the main hangar is based on wingspan. We calculated the size of the plane because there's only room for maybe eight planes in there.
Right.
And the, the lot of expansion of the main hangar, that's, that's not a feasible project.
Um, yeah, we looked into it, the, the doors are, are persistent problem there and replacing them would be a good idea. But we applied for a grant one year, we didn't get it and we went waiting around for the right opportunity to. But I suppose you could. If, if the doors were just abandoned, you could expand off the front and have more hangar space there.
That's what, I mean, that's what I'm wondering is, and we don't have to have the brainstorming session, you know, tonight, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just, you know, if, if that really hangar space seems to be a really good source of, of revenue for us and we have a waiting, we have a waiting list, then there's a demand for it. And, and at some point, you know, yeah, it would cost money to obviously invest in that, but but maybe the break even on it, you know, is three, four, five years, I mean, I don't know, we'd have to run that analysis. But at some point then it just is gravy and we continue to, and it helps to balance our, our budget up there.
That's a good idea because we talked about a million dollars to replace the doors. But, you know, a small castle building like that or butler building wouldn't really be that much, you know, to expand. And it also wouldn't need that much more heat.
Who applied for that grant that wasn't funded?
The, um, the door grant, the hangar door? I think that might have been a multimodal grant, either it was in process when I got here or CNS it applied for us, our bad.
So what was the funding source that was applied for?
DOT.
New York State or federal?
New York State.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall that one at all.
Okay. Story I had was Tracy and Doug, they either went right before I got here or I'd applied for a grant, but was turned down. I'll look into what I got paperwork wise.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see, uh, yeah, what the funding source was and, and if you have the application, I'd like to review it and see what was done.
Yeah.
It'd gone to you, Carrie.
What's that?
They should have forwarded that to you instead of trying to hand it up there as the part timers of the airport.
So could you, could you just, as you look into that, that grant as well, Bob, could that be something you could get us more information on? What, you know, and, and like I said, we can have some follow up work sessions on this. But, but that would be just, again, you don't know unless you have some numbers in front of you and you know, as we, as we try to brainstorm on this. Additionally, and for the record, because I know this is something that gets talked about, that's a great picture right there, Bob. It gets talked about a lot in, in, in the public. And there's kind of, I don't want to say a lack of understanding of the way it's designed up there and what you have to work with, but the people, you know, the ideas are always, well, why don't you just expand the runway and then you can get bigger planes to, to utilize the facility? Why don't, you know, why can't we be like Jamestown and have commercial flights in or in and out of there? Can you speak to kind of, A, the geography of the limitations? And then, at least from my understanding, the FAA isn't handing out like the, I don't know, commercial airport licenses or whatever it's called. Can you, can you kind of just talk a little bit about that, please?
If, if I may interject first with that, back when I was on a county legislature and it was under, under Linda's administration, there was a study done for forty county, Cataragus County, Olean Airport. And as part of that study, they were looking to the possibility of expanding the runway. And it, and from my understanding, when the report came out, and I do have copies of that report in my office, but at the, it would be the, I guess you would say the southeast, southwest end of the runway, the, it drops off so quickly that to expand the runway would cost prohibitive to bring in, you know, the fill that was needed to, to bring it up to where we could accept bigger, bigger planes. So that, that, that study is available, so. So I just want everybody to know that, so Bob, go ahead.
I don't have a lot to add because I haven't really looked into it that much. But from what I understand, let's just say in nineteen eighty, you know, around then, airports that weren't commercial carriers at the time wouldn't be subsidized by the FAA. So a new airport built for commercial carrying today, I don't think is ever going to be FAA subsidized, at least I haven't, you know, I think that's what our consultants all of us.
Okay, so in other words, the smaller airports that do have that commercial carrier designation, the only way they sustain or operate is through subsidy from the government.
Right.
Right, right. So if we looked at that, we would most likely not be eligible for that. But that's, that's always something that I know, I feel those questions.
Yeah.
You know, expand, expand the runway and then, and then the other thing, so, sorry, Jason, go ahead.
Uh, well, the last page of Bob's presentation, I mean, it's the airport manager, I think if, if we're at a chance of getting this airport into a more revenue and making money, I feel like that's where, where we need to go. You've got a support group and if you have a manager to lead that airport, you've got a passion for just somebody to fill the position, somebody that's going to have a passionate take on the challenge, make in that place profitable. And then they link up with that supporter, which is already, you've got a committee kind of sitting there that knows about the airport, knows who uses it. And I think that's the road we ought to try, try going, or at least that's my input. And we still have, you know, he mentioned the manager, getting an H, you know, who, who knows how long it'll work for be there. And I think there's also an opportunity where that person being around while someone new comes in would be a huge asset. They not take advantage of it.
Anybody else not understand ninety percent?
Bruce has been involved in that airport for, I think, over forty years. He's seen it go up and down in the different economies for, for a long time.
Well, and I you know, I, 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 I agree, and I see, you know, on this side, on this slide, it talks about continued support, you know, from the county, from the council. But, but also, you know, I mean, you've got on there from the CEO Alliance and OBD and, and even St. Bonaventure and, you know, I, I realize they, those organizations reached out with, with letters of support. We all, we all received those. And, and I guess I would, I would ask for, for their participation and their, in their usage of, of our, of our facility. We talk about keeping business local. You know, how, how do we get, from what I recall, say Bonaventure's, you know, athletic teams used to use our airport, but I don't believe they do anymore. You know, how do we, how do we really come together to support each other and and, and have our local businesses? I, I know Dresser and used to use the airport, Vince Volpe was flying in and out of there, but I don't think that happens anymore. So how can we collaborate with these organizations to help, you know, support local? And, and i- is there opportunity there, I guess? And that's really, you know, on, on Bob and the mayor, but, but all of us too.
I think there's opportunity out there, I mean, the National Guard is another group that, you know, we've tried to partner with or, you know, we have in minor ways. But, you know, a lot of those take long, long negotiations or a lot of work to spend with them. You know, there are a lot of ideas I think that could be explored, it just needs the right person to spend it and be passionate about it or the right group.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Oh, I, I, I thought of, Bob, if you had that, was it the first image there, the big overview of the airport, the, the nice clear image that John liked so much? That one right there, when, when you showed that image, I actually, it occurred to me, I remember a few years ago, we, we spent the, the timber right money to put in a fence to prevent deer from getting into the, to the, the runway. Because they were smashing down an old fence that was inferior and they were still blocking planes and we had issues. And I don't know if it's my most recent, like, getting into hunting in the last year or so, but like the state does this with a lot of their land, they'll make you fill out like a form and stuff like that. Or you just, you know, you go get a little permit from them for twenty-five or whatever bucks and as long as you have a, a permit, maybe, maybe that would be a revenue source. It's a lot, we have four hundred and seven acres of land up there, I'm sure. It's just like any other place that you could go that the state owns or other municipalities own, that you can just, you know, kind of entice people to go up there and take care of some of our deer problems up there, as well as, you know, generating some revenue for the city, just a thought.
Uh, John, if it's okay, I, I got a comment.
Sure, Bill.
Okay, and I mentioned this before, to, to get a better understanding at county level, Frank Higgins and I will be setting up a, a, I guess you could call it a, a task force to take a look at how, how, how we can get the county more involved in the airport. So I'm meeting with him Thursday to discuss the makeup of this and and so I'll, I'll report back, we're going to have, we'll have city officials. I think we should have representatives of OBD or representative, different groups like that. And the, the support group, the county, so we'll be, we'll be putting this together. So it'll be a, like an ad hoc committee to, to take a look at how can we, how can we get the county more involved? And how can we promote the airport better?
Great. Great. Yeah, I, I look forward to that, that's, and that's what, that's what's needed. I mean, it's, it is, it is a good facility if, if people would just use it. And so, you know, you know, and I, I think it would be beneficial to, to see the cost breakdown. I mean, you know, Jason obviously is, is pretty well versed with the airport, probably better than, than any of us are is, you know, with his background. And, you know, maybe, maybe the, the full time manager is, is something that is a benefit, that is a way to, to go. Look like and so it would be great to just kind of put a list of ideas and I, I guess I would ask all of you to, to do that. And we can have, maybe after the mayor has a discussion with, with Frank Higgins and what the strategy is there, what some of our ideas are as we are heading into budget season coming up here. And we just work together. Anything else? Okay. Anything else, I guess we will, thank you, Director Ring.
Thank you.
All right, so you can stop sharing. Perhaps.
Is that the airport too, Bob?
Yeah, that's the, that's a view from the, the, the looking north.
So that's all we have on the agenda. So anything else before we move along? Okay, so there's no approval of committee reports, so then I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second, please?
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Dory, all in favor?
Aye.
I, oh, carries. Everyone, thank you very much. That's, this is the only thing for tonight, right? So we're good? All right, okay, everybody have a good night.